Good afternoon. I'm Nate Kazmerek, Vice President and Director of Practice Groups for the Federal Society. I welcome you to this special session devoted to Dobbs, Roe, Casey, and the rule of law. We are pleased to have an excellent panel gathered, and we're looking forward to an insightful discussion. And we are fortunate to have a wonderful moderator with Judge Branch. The judge's accomplished career and full bio is available to you for your review on the convention app and our website, as well as the bios of all of our panelists. But very briefly, Honorable Judge Lisa Branch currently serves on the United States Court of Appeals for the 11th Circuit. Previously, she served on the Court of Appeals of Georgia. Judge Branch is a member of the Board of Advisors of the Atlanta Lawyers Chapter for the Federal Society. She is also a graduate of Davidson College, and she earned her law degree from Emory Law School. Please join me in welcoming our panel and Judge Branch.
Thank you, Nate, for that kind introduction. I'm always honored to serve as moderator for a panel at the Federal Society's annual Lawyers Convention, especially this year, our 40th anniversary. And it is particularly meaningful to do so on Veterans Day when we can honor all those who served our country. Welcome certainly to our afternoon panel entitled Dobbs, Roe, Casey, and the Rule of Law. On June 24, 2022, the U.S. Supreme Court released its 6-3 decision in Dobbs v. Jackson Women's Health Organization overruling Roe v. Wade and Planned Parenthood of Southeastern Pennsylvania v. Casey, holding that the U.S. Constitution confers no right to abortion. While Dobbs rests firmly in our present, having been released less than five months ago, it nonetheless poses questions about the past and future of the Supreme Court and of our society. As for the past, Roe, Casey, and Dobbs recognized the deep divide of our citizenry on the issue of abortion. Roe, at the beginning of the second paragraph of the opinion, said, "We forthwith acknowledge our awareness of the sensitive and moral nature of the abortion controversy." Casey also nodded to the issue. "Men and women of good conscience can disagree, and we suppose some always shall disagree about the profound moral and spiritual implications of terminating a pregnancy." And in fact, in Dobbs, it appeared in the first sentence, "Abortion presents a profound moral issue on which Americans hold sharply conflicting views." All of these statements hold true in our present, with varying developments going on in the states. With the issuance of Dobbs, states with trigger laws immediately restricted abortions within these states. As of this past Tuesday, ballot initiatives guaranteeing abortion access passed in some states, and those that would have limited abortions failed in others. So what does the future hold? Certainly lawsuits seeking rulings on state constitutions regarding abortion, perhaps a push for new state statutes and state constitutional amendments, challenges to the legality of abortion pills, fights over whether prenatal life is entitled to any of the rights enjoyed after birth, and the fate of Supreme Court cases based on notions of substantive due process, such as Griswold, Lawrence, and Abergoffel. Our distinguished panel will address these issues during its discussion. I will briefly introduce them, and then each will give opening remarks. The panelists will then have an opportunity to respond to each other, and I will also have questions. And as you have come to expect at these events, I will open it up to audience Q and A, and I hope to do so no later than 4 o'clock. Our first speaker will be Professor Sharif Gurgas, who has been an Associate Professor of Law at Notre Dame Law School since 2021. He is the co-author of What Is a Marriage: Man and a Woman, a Defense, which was cited in a dissent in United States v. Windsor. Prior to becoming a professor, he practiced law at Jones Day in Washington, D.C., focusing on appellate and complex litigation. He clerked for Justice Alito and Judge Griffith of the D.C. Circuit. He will address the arguments that Dobbs undermined the rule of law by too quickly dismissing the due process or equal protection arguments for Roe, by breaking from precedent in an unprecedented way, or by allowing a change in court personnel to lead to major changes in constitutional law. Our second speaker is David Cole, who is the National Legal Director for the ACLU. He has litigated many constitutional cases before the U.S. Supreme Court, including Masterpiece Cake Shop v. Colorado Civil Rights Commission. He's on leave from Georgetown University, where he has taught constitutional law and criminal justice since 1990. He will argue that what is egregiously wrong about Dobbs is that those in the majority are opportunistically using originalism as their justification for overturning 50 years of precedent and calling into question the court's entire approach to the due process clause. Next, Carrie Severino. She is the president of Judicial Crisis Network and co-author with Molly Hemingway of Justice on Trial: The Kavanaugh Confirmation and the Future of the Court. She regularly files briefs on high-profile Supreme Court cases and served as law clerk to Justice Thomas and Judge Centelle of the D.C. Circuit. She will speak about the importance of the rule of law to the success of American society. She will discuss Roe and Casey as key examples of the Supreme Court undermining the rule of law by inventing a constitutional right never adopted by the American people through the constitutional process. Our final speaker will be Professor Mary Ann Case, the Arnold Schur Professor of Law at the University of Chicago Law School. She was a litigator for Paul Weiss in New York before that, and her scholarship concentrates on the regulation of sex, gender, and sexuality. Professor Case will discuss three main issues: the comparative problem of abortion and the rule of law, the notion of the heckler's veto for the rule of law, and the implication for women. Professor Gurgas.
Thank you. Thanks to Fed Soc and to all the panelists. I've learned a lot from each of you over the years of doing events together. I want to touch on one point on each of four topics, so broad but pointed. The first one is the historical analysis in Roe and Dobbs. The second is a point about stare decisis. The third about the court's legitimacy, and the fourth about equal protection. The first point first occurred to me when I was actually doing an event on Dobbs at the Aspen Institute Ideas Festival, which is very different from the Fed Soc Festival. And I was on a panel with the great Neil Katyal, and he said, "Isn't it ironic that on one day in Bruin, the court says that you can't regulate guns, and on the next day in Dobbs says that you can regulate abortion?" And that got me thinking, what would have to be true for those two cases to really be an apples-to-apples comparison? Dobbs, following a bunch of other precedents, says that a constitutional right has to be based in the text, or deeply rooted in history, or integral to a broader right that is deeply rooted. So for guns and abortion to be similarly situated, you'd need it to be the case on guns as it is on abortion, that first of all, there is no Second Amendment, no written right. As a matter of history, from the dawn of the common law in 1160 until 1960 in the U.S., not a single English case, or state case, or federal case, or statute, or legal treatise, or law review article going out on a limb, grasping for tenure, had ever suggested there was a right to keep and bear arms, that on the contrary, in every one of those 800 years and every one of those Anglo-American jurisdictions, the keeping and bearing of arms was unlawful, that its unlawfulness at common law was backed up by criminal statutes across the country so that by 1858, half the states, by 1868, three-quarters, by 1877, all but two of the states, soon after that, all of the states, as late as 1960, all but four of the 50 states. In 1973, still two-thirds of the states had criminal statutes applying to every form of keeping and carrying, and that in 1973, seven judges on the court said, "We will strike down the gun laws of all 50 states because our concept of liberty requires a right to keep and bear arms that's found nowhere in text, or history, or even any close analogy to precedent." Then Dobbs and Bruin would be on a par. But they're not, and that's of course just reciting the historical analysis in the Dobbs opinion itself and the part critiquing Roe. The dissent, with a potential exception on whether pre-quickening abortions were unlawful, though they drop a footnote that cites the authorities explaining how it was and subject to lots of legal burdens, making it clear even those early abortions were not a common law right, doesn't really contest the history. It talks obviously a lot about stare decisis. Carrie's going to go into a kind of detailed analysis of the different factors. I just want to make an overarching point corresponding to what I take to be the broad theme of the dissent on this, which is that this is an unprecedented departure from precedent. Never before has the court overturned a major precedent in the absence of a change in the law or the facts. The majority responds to that by saying, "Well, that's what we did in everybody's favorite First Amendment case, West Virginia versus Barnett," which reversed a case that was only three years old, "but also if the Plessy doctrine of separate but equal came back to the court one year later, in the absence of a change in law or facts, we obviously still should have overruled it." So the dissent says, "Yeah, but those cases didn't involve an individual right." The court, probably thinking, "Individual rights may be sacrosanct, but not everything the court has called an individual right is sacrosanct," points to the Lochner cases, which were overturned, involving overturning an individual right to freedom of contract. Now, some people, I think Professor Cole has pointed out, "Look, that was a case that didn't just shrink one individual right, but expanded rights for workers against exploitation." And Professor Amar, my old teacher, points out, "Well, but opponents of Roe would say the same thing of Dobbs, that it shrank one right, but expanded rights to protection against lethal violence for the unborn." So then the dissent says, "Okay, never before have we overturned a case in the absence of a change in law or facts where there was an individual right at stake, and the right was enjoyed by half of the country for 50 years," which sounds like never before have we overturned Roe v. Wade, which is true, and it's important. It's obviously a huge deal, and that's the theme of the general point. But I think it's a huge deal in a way that's fully captured by the analysis, pro and con, of the factors of stare decisis, so it doesn't do independent work. Probably the other major theme that stands out is captured in one sentence where the dissent says, "Roe and Casey are gone only because the majority has always despised them and now has the votes to discard them," which is a very Justice Kagan-sounding line that echoes a point she has made on the lecture circuit, that it looks bad for the court, it's bad for legitimacy, when the court makes huge changes in law based on changes in personnel. I think there's something to that, but it depends. The main mechanism the Constitution provides for the people to give effect to their understanding of what a legitimate court looks like is the political process for picking the officials who pick the judges. So if a change in personnel is the result of a movement premised on the idea that Roe was illegitimate, not constitutional law, as John Hart Ely said, then the resulting reversal of Roe is the legitimacy mechanism working. The fourth and final point, I actually think the strongest argument against the majority is not made in the dissent, and that's the idea that the majority gave too short shrift to the equal protection argument for abortion, for the outcome in Roe. In the end, though, I think that actually the majority, it should have given longer shrift to that argument, but that the bulk of its analysis, which is a critique of Roe's rationale, applies to the equal protection claim as well, because those two arguments actually rise or fall together. How could that be? You think Roe was about privacy, this is equal protection, it's totally different. And it's true that Roe obviously made the point that, made the claim that privacy grounds a right to an abortion, but it couldn't stop there because there was, just to say there's a privacy interest, leaves open the question whether there's another interest that overrides it. So the court also had to say, "And the Constitution forbids states to treat fetal life as innocent human life in this context." That somehow the Constitution itself, the due process clause, takes a position on what is really a kind of abstruse question of moral theory, when does the fetus count enough to justify a ban? And it was that premise, and Roe's very specific answer to that, which is fetal viability, and Roe's lack of any legal sources to support it, that was the main thing that the liberal alliance who critiqued Roe, like John Hart Ely and Larry Tribe, pointed to and emphasized when they said that Roe was based on naked moral reasoning that has no legal pedigree to it. But it turns out that even though the equal protection arguments are supposed to avoid exactly that problem, they're supposed to avoid relying on the idea that the Constitution itself takes a position that requires states to discount fetal moral worth, actually does that in the end. I'll give you just one example. One common form of the argument is that there's an equal protection problem with abortion bans because they rest on an invidious sex stereotype, in particular on the premise that women ought to perform motherhood, or ought to, at least in the sense of bearing kids to birth. And I think that the argument that that is invidious or constitutionally impermissible couldn't work if that belief is itself rooted in two other premises that are perfectly constitutionally permissible, namely, the idea that parents have an obligation to bear the ordinary burdens of keeping their kids alive, plus the premise that fetuses count as kids. So the first point about parental duties obviously is constitutionally okay. So if you're going to say there's an invidious constitutional, an unconstitutional premise in the vicinity, you have to say that it's somehow independently constitutionally bad for states to treat the unborn as moral equals, which is exactly the premise that Roe was critiqued for and that the equal protection argument was meant to evade. And more to the point here, it's the premise that Dobbs, in the bulk of its analysis, spends a great deal of time and care refuting based on the historical arguments I started with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
So thank you, Judge. I want to start by acknowledging that I'm unlikely to convince many people in this room. But one of the things that I've always appreciated about law is that it provides an avenue for people with profoundly different views to disagree civilly, and I think that is increasingly important in this increasingly divided time. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here. In Dobbs, a bare majority of the court, not six to three, but a bare majority of the court voted to overturn Roe and Casey because they said Roe and Casey were egregiously wrong, the scheme they set up was unworkable, and there were no real reliance interests that the court had to consider. In fact, Roe and Casey were not egregiously wrong. I would suggest that Dobbs is egregiously wrong. The scheme was quite workable and protected women's rights for 50 years with clarity. And third, huge settled expectations were disrupted by the decision. So let me start with whether Roe and Casey are egregiously wrong. The argument for why they're egregiously wrong is that they did not apply an originalist interpretation of the Constitution, which Sharif gave you, that, that is, there can't be a right to abortion because there wasn't a right to abortion when the due process clause was adopted in 1868. That's the argument. But that method of interpretation has had four adherents, four relatively consistent adherents. In the history of the Supreme Court, we've had 116 justices, four have been sort of committed originalists, that's Scalia, Thomas, Gorsuch, and Barrett. A few others are occasional, occasionally occasional originalists, Alito among them, Kavanaugh among them, Justice Black perhaps. And no one, not even the most committed, not even Justice Thomas, applies originalism consistently, because they can't apply originalism consistently, because if you applied consistently, it would lead to results that we would all recognize, including in this room, as untenable. Brown versus Board was wrongly decided. Segregation is constitutional. Women are not protected by the, by the equal protection clause. Interracial marriage, Justice Thomas, that's not constitutionally protected because it wasn't protected when the equal protection clause or the due process clause were adopted. The First Amendment would not protect libel or criticism of the government, for God's What every other justice has used over that period of time, and what every originalist justice uses most of the time, is familiar to all of us who are lawyers because it's what we do when we write briefs and argue cases in court. We start with the text and the history. We identify a principle that the provision sought to protect. We are guided by the precedents before us, applied by other people just as wise as we are, maybe wiser, to see how that principle has developed, and we apply it to the facts at hand. We recognize that that process permits, necessitates the evolution of law, just as it does in the common law context. And on that view, Roe is fully consistent with the approach that 112 of 116 justices over the history of the court have, have applied. The due process clause has, over time, protected the right to decide how to raise your child, the right whether to use contraception, the right whether to refuse medical treatment, the right to marry someone of a different race or a different, or the same sex. In short, it has protected deeply personal and intimate decisions that should be made by individuals for themselves, not by politicians. That's the principle it applied, and it was correct, not egregiously wrong. So Roe and Casey were egregiously wrong only if 112 out of the 116 justices who have sat on the Supreme Court were egregiously wrong. I don't think so. Now, egregiously wrong is not enough, the court acknowledged. There also has to be, you know, not substantial reliance interests, and Justice Alito in his decision, probably the worst part of his decision, and there's a lot, a lot of competition there, but the worst part of his decision is the fact that he gives the back of his hand to the reliance interests, despite the fact that this is a right that fully half of the country has enjoyed for 50 years, that every woman of childbearing age has grown up depending upon, and that has been critical to the introduction of women into an equal status in public, in public life. So at the end of the day, the decision cannot be justified by the law, and I think that's why people think that it was justified simply by the fact that three justices appointed by President Trump, who applied a litmus test and promised they would overturn Roe versus Wade, did overturn Roe versus Wade. And that's why the court's approval rating today is at 25%, the lowest it's been in its history. Now finally, I want to suggest Dobbs was wrong because of who the burden falls upon. I'm sure there are many people in this room who would not get an abortion or support an abortion, even if it was their daughter, and even if it was an unwanted pregnancy, and maybe even if it was an unwanted pregnancy caused by rape. But I'm sure that there are others in this room who would support their daughter in getting an abortion if she found herself in an unwanted, unwanted pregnant state. I am sure of that. And what I'm also sure of is every one of you will be able to do that because you have the resources to fly to the states where it's legal and pay the cost that you will have to pay to allow your child to exercise that right. Who does the burden fall upon? It doesn't fall on any of us. It's easy for us to say, "Oh, oh, it's the right of the fetus and, you know, not the rights of women," because it's the uneducated, the poor, who are going to be affected by, and the young who are going to be affected by this. Now, I recognize that this is a difficult issue because people can reasonably disagree about the status of the fetus and the morality of abortion. Absolutely. I grew up Catholic. I know that this is a hard decision. But given that the burden of pregnancy is so great and falls on one sex alone, that in no other context is anyone required to donate their body, even temporarily, to save the life of another, and that people do reasonably disagree about how to balance the interest of a living human being and an unborn fetus, the decision, like the decision about who to marry, how to educate your kids, whether to refuse medical treatment, should be left to the individual, not to the government. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Ms. Severino.
Okay. Can you hear me? All right, the light didn't go on, but you can hear me. Thanks. So our panel is talking about Dobbs and the rule of law, and so I wanted to start by talking a little bit about what, what do we mean when we're talking about the rule of law, and in what sense does that, does Dobbs have anything to do with that? The rule of law is a concept that goes back thousands of years, at least as far as Aristotle, who talked about the rule of law and contrasting it with the rule of just an individual. So do we live in a system where our governors, those who have the power over us, those who have authority over us, are constrained by something outside themselves? Is it simply their individual desire of, they think this is the right way to order things, or is there, is there actually a legal structure that applies across the board to everyone equally, and it also creates legal constraints on the government themselves and our governors themselves? Obviously, in America, we do live in such a system. We, in the Federal Society, we are exceptionally proud of our limited government, our separation of powers, the checks and balances that the framers have devised in the Constitution, the notion that no one branch of government gets to be the judge and the creator of law simultaneously and the executor of the law. That is key to our system, and that is key to the rule of law and really the success of America, of America, because knowing that we have, that we can rely on that is what makes it possible to build a cohesive society that has been as successful as ours. The challenge with some of the criticisms of Dobbs is, I think, often people have said, "Well, this is going to disrupt the rule of law because it requires overturning a case." And I think it's undoubtful that stare decisis plays a role in the idea of the rule of law. The stability of law is important, but the stability of the law needs to be important within our constitutional construct. So it is not simply stability for the sake of stability, and I think no justice in the court, and probably no one in this room, including on both sides of this panel, would agree that every case that's been decided needs to be maintained. And so it's a question of which, which ones need to be maintained. And the, the fact that a case is overturned while it can cause some disruption in the law, in some cases, may be necessary for the preservation of the rule of law itself. So in Roe and then later, later in Casey, what we had was a court that had, was interpreting a document, that is, our founding document, that has a, a method of amendment, so we can change this document, but instead of, instead of appealing to the method of amendment to update a Constitution which for 200 years of our history had not been recognized to include a right to abortion, and as Sharif illustrated, not only had this not been recognized to be a part of the Constitution, it was outlawed in most of the country for the vast majority of that time, instead of updating that through the constitutional amendment process, it was updated through the courts. And, you know, a lot of the criticisms that David brought go to, was that a good thing to update? You know, what, what, what should, is it better for women, poor women in particular, to have access to abortion, or as people on the pro-life side would say, is it better for their children, who are even more marginalized than the poor women themselves, or the women as well, to not be subjected to lethal violence within their own bodies, even if they think that is what might be best for them in the time? All of those debates are not what the court should be considering, right? Those are valid discussions if we're talking about, should we actually amend the Constitution to include this right? But it's, when you, when you're confronted with a right that is simply not in the Constitution and a court that, that introduces it into that, that, I think, is the, is one of the biggest affronts against the rule of law possible, and so a court setting that, correcting that course can only be said to be acting within the rule of law anytime we're bringing it back into what the Constitution says. And this, this is true whether the decision was And this is true whether the decision was decided yesterday and is incorrect, or was decided 50 years ago and was incorrect. We still live in a government of rule of law, not of men. To just address some of the, I think, the biggest question here really boils down to the question of whether the stare decisis analysis of the court was correct. And so, as Sharif mentioned, I'll just go through a little bit and maybe address some of the points that David brought up. And as one quick aside, though, I noticed that equal protection was brought up, and I'll say, I think it is, the court obviously didn't give a lot of discussion to that, but it does complicate the issue of trying to make this argument for an equal protection case, when you have the briefing in the case which explicitly denied the fact that abortion was something that was limited to women. It's interesting that David said that this is a great burden and falls on one sex alone, but that's not actually the position that was taken by the litigants in the case. They argued that women and men might both be able to have abortions. So I'm not sure if you can have your cake and, well, you can't necessarily have your cake and eat it too on that question. You have to decide whether you're going to commit to the fact that it's a women's issue or not. In terms of the four factors that were addressed in stare decisis, first, the quality of reasoning. And I just want to point out in this fact that the quality of reasoning in Roe and later in Casey didn't used to be as maybe clear-cut and polarized an issue as it is now. When Roe was decided, it was widely criticized, and I think up until recently, and while it's fallen very much out of fashion to criticize the reasoning in Roe, there were many people on both sides of the aisle, including leading liberal scholars, and the court cites a whole bunch of them, from Lawrence Tribe to Mark Tuschnet to Archibald Cox, et cetera, who pointed out the fact that Roe really was effectively legislation masquerading as law and didn't really even make an effort to try to do a constitutional and legal analysis in the normal sense to come up with its conclusions. Its decision of drawing this viability line and breaking up the trimesters, even if one thought that, hey, the substantive due process arguments made sense, the equal protection clause arguments made sense, there's no way you can get Roe's framework from either of those arguments and from the Constitution itself. It simply was an act of judicial fiat. That is the opposite of the rule of law. The second factor, workability, I think you can see by the number of circuit splits that were going on regarding this case and the length of time the court was having to address it, by the fact that Casey had to exist in the first place and, in fact, rewrote Roe itself. So that's sort of the Supreme Court almost acknowledging that the reasoning was not great in the first place, because the reasoning was reconsidered and updated in Casey. All of that goes to the illustration of how this is not exactly a workable decision. One factor that David didn't address is the impact on other areas of the law. This is something that Justice O'Connor highlighted when she talked about the abortion distortion and how that, other areas of the law, I can think offhand of like standing, of criminal law, of First Amendment law, when it comes to abortion clinic buffer zones and enforced speech and abortion, all of those have been interpreted by courts differently in the abortion context and other areas of the law. That should be a red flag as well. And then finally, on the reliance interest quickly, because I know I'm out of time, I think it's just very clear, the notion of reliance and saying, well, people have expected to have this right for a long time, that's great, but that's true of any case where stare decisis is a factor. Any case you're thinking of overturning, people have expected it to be on the books for a long time. That's not what we mean by reliance when we're talking about reliance. We're talking about people taking actions that they would not have taken if they had known this was not good law. And I think, as the court rightly points out, under that, the traditional understanding of reliance, again, here's an abortion distortion in action. We're redefining the notion of what reliance means in the context of abortion, which is the epitome of opportunistic decision-making. But if you look at reliance as reliance has always been understood, there simply aren't decisions, I mean, that you would say, well, I would not have made this decision if I had known abortion was off the table, that go farther out than, say, nine months. So obviously, there are people who would say, hey, you know what? If I had known that abortion was an option, I might not have chose to have this particular sexual encounter, for example. That is true. However, that doesn't go beyond the space of nine months, you know? So that is not what we understand as the type of reliance that would be dramatically impacted by this. And just as a final point, the reliance on other cases that the court has overturned is undeniably dramatically greater. Think of the overturning of the entire Jim Crow apparatus. Basically, you know, half the country was operating on a legal system and that had huge amounts of investment and infrastructure based on a separate but equal position that the court correctly overturned. That shouldn't have been the reason not to correct the case and bring it back into keeping with the Constitution. So, thank you.
Thank you. Professor Case.
Thanks so much. So I'm going to talk fast, because I want to put a lot of points on the table, and I will use this as an occasion to plug my prior scholarship and my forthcoming scholarship, which expands on these points. Going to make points as a comparativeist, as a feminist, and as a doctrinal constitutionalist. And unlike David, I do hope to change some minds, partly because I am making somewhat different points. The first thing I would encourage upon the pro-life people in the audience is to familiarize themselves, if they are not already familiar, with a German constitutional approach to abortion, which has been an interesting parallel to the American, where in the '70s they had a counterpoint to Roe v. Wade, in the '90s they had a counterpoint to Casey with opposite political directions. You had a more liberal legislature, a more conservative court. The court in the '70s said that the unamendable provision of the German Constitution, saying that human dignity shall be inviolable, meant that it was an affirmative obligation on the government to stop abortion. Now, you may think that should lead to criminalization and harsh punishments and something, you know, that is now only possible in the United States since Dobbs. It has not, in part because the German approach has been, the important thing is not that abortion be condemned, but that it be prevented. And if criminalization doesn't prevent it, then we will try other measures. Now, like Roe v. Wade, the German abortion decisions are not masterpieces of legal craftsmanship, and any good doctrinalist finds them completely incoherent. I was ready to go, when I researched them originally, to criticize them also as a feminist. But what surprised me is that they work. Everybody I told I was working on abortion said, why are you working on that? It's not interesting anymore. I would love abortion not to be interesting anymore. And if the German approach can make it not interesting, I'm all for it. Now, what the German approach does these days is, in the first 12 weeks of pregnancy, a woman who undergoes counseling designed to open up to her a vision of a life with a child, still wants an abortion after that counseling, she's entitled to it. Indeed, if she is too poor to afford it herself, the government must pay for it, says the Constitutional Court. So Germans fill a box you don't think can be filled, which is prohibited subsidized. In a country in which abortion is a constitutional wrong, 80% of abortions, last I checked, were paid for by the government. Now, Germany is a social state, and there are all kinds of things about the German system that mean you can't necessarily take it over, but I would wish that, at least, for example, the counseling, the pre-Dobbs counseling regimes, we're not finger-wagging in the United States, don't have an abortion, you'll have regret and cancer, but more affirmative, like the German ones. The second thing I want to do is what many people have done, beginning with the conference's first speaker, Jamil Green, on my side of the debate, and I haven't heard an answer from the other side of the debate, which is to talk about how originalism is bad for women. Now, I won't go into, American originalism is bad for women, because at both the time of the original framing and the time of the framing of the post-Civil War amendments, women's rights were considered and affirmatively rejected. Abigail Adams, right, remember the ladies? John's response was, haha, that's funny, and by the way, we know better than to give up our masculine privileges. I won't go into this further, because I discussed it as the only woman with a speaking part at the Federalist Society's Student Convention about a decade ago, and that led to an article, I would commend to all of you, called "The Ladies Forget About Them: A Feminist Perspective on the Limits of Originalism, Published in Constitutional Commentary." Do you want to say a few words about the sex discrimination argument? The argument that I was surprised to see had not been made, is one that was made in the '70s, which is focused on the unequal duty to rescue on the part of parents. We do not have a generalized duty to rescue in the United States, and in particular, with respect to parents, we do not require fathers to contribute any portion of their body, their blood, their marrow, their kidneys, even if the result would be to save their child's life. And I think if that is the case, it cannot be demanded of women that they give their body at the risk of their life to save a potential child, when an actual living child need not be saved. Now, of course, if you know equal protection law, you can know that the solution is to either ratchet up or ratchet down. I'm perfectly comfortable with ratcheting up and saying, parents should have a more generalized duty to rescue. I want to talk about another set of equal protection problems that I don't think the conservatives have faced, which is, if now abortion is not protected, then it's not clear that any reproductive rights are protected. And just as abortion can now be criminalized, so can, you know, we can now imagine something closer to a one-child policy, or a licensed parent, or all kinds of things that were not thinkable precisely because of modern substantive due process doctrine. Without existing substantive due process-based sexual and reproductive rights as a backstop, is much within the power of the court to extend privileges now granted by law, is the possibility that even married heterosexuals can have their affirmative reproductive rights curtailed. This is something that Scalia recognized. And I have so often throughout my life said, Scalia and I, when we connect the dots, we see the same figure. The only difference is his dreams are my nightmares and vice versa. But I think he is with me on this one. Let me then go on to what I'm calling the heckler's veto on stare decisis, which, again, I think is a word of caution to the federalists more generally. And I saw the germ of this in Amy Coney Barrett's scholarship on stare decisis, and I'm seeing the practice in the current Supreme Court. And I want to, again, mobilize as a comparativeist on this score, right? Late 1990, I was at a conference at NYU, including a majority of members of the United States Supreme Court and the Russian Constitutional Court. Sandra Day O'Connor gave her, you know, school marmush lecture about, you know, the rule of law and constitutional courts, the end of which she said, any questions? And someone from the Russian Constitutional Court, who was at that time dealing with Chechen crisis, raised his hand and said, just got one question. How do you get your decrees enforced? And she said, oh, you know, we give them to the marshal. She didn't really understand the question. Now, I'm not talking here when I'm talking about the dangers of the heckler's veto, about the standard problem of, you know, is the Supreme Court being respected or not. I'm talking about what Barrett suggested was a factor in stare decisis was whether the decision was accepted. And of course, that's dynamic, right? If you know, as a legislator, as a private actor, as anyone in the system, that the way you can get a decision overturned is not to respect it, to pass blatantly unconstitutional laws, then the rule of law unravels. And I think we are seeing this, and that the Supreme Court is cooperating with it, when it does dissents from denials of certiorari or even concurrences with denial of certiorari, inviting more unrest. And I'll finally say, again, as a cautionary tale, and this is also a genuine question I have for anyone that can answer it, if now doubt is cast on whether there is substantive due process, what should not be forgotten, which is, again, something Scalia recognizes, and again, I see with Scalia, online corporation is substantive due process. So I don't see how this Supreme Court can, consistent with the rule of law, maintain its aggressive stance on, for example, religious freedom and guns, if it casts doubt on substantive due process. And the clerks from Justice Thomas's chambers in the group are saying, oh, privileges and immunities. I invite you to consider whether you, whether Justice Thomas, whether anyone, is prepared to say that Pope Francis or the Dalai Lama loses all religious rights on landing in this country because neither of them are citizens.
Thank you. And we've had a lot of differing views on this, so I would like to open this up to the panelists, to respond to any of your fellow panelists. Professor Gerges?
Sure, just a few quick points. So, one, it is very far from the truth that you have to be a Barrett or Scalia or Thomas-style originalist or Gorsuch to think that Roe was badly reasoned. Carrie mentioned some of the people, right? At the time, John Hart Ely, leading liberal scholar, said, Roe is bad constitutional law because it is not constitutional law and gives almost no sense of an obligation to try to be. Larry Tribe said, behind Roe's verbal smokescreen, the basis for its judgment is nowhere to be found. And he said something like, you have to read and, one has to read and reread the passage to make sure nothing has been inadvertently left out. Judge Henry Friendly, the leading liberal judge of the 20th century who did not make it to the Supreme Court, had an unpublished opinion where he focused on and dealt with the best argument for Roe, a Roe-style right, which is the kind of argument rooted in the sorts of precedents that David was mentioning. And he there says, there is a huge disanalogy between the right to refuse medical treatment and the other kind of privacy and autonomy rights that either affect only the adult making them or other consenting adults, or in the limiting case, the right to direct your kid's education, which affects a third party, but not in a way that anyone can reasonably think is harmful in every instance, on the one hand, and the right to an abortion on the other, which is quite different. It has an impact on beings that states can permissibly see as third parties who are harmed every time and have not consented to it. That huge difference between privacy and autonomy cases that David mentioned and abortion is reason enough to think that Roe is completely unhinged. And that same point about precedent was one made by one of Blackman's former clerks, who was a big fan of it. On the equal protection point that, well, we don't demand of men that they donate their kidneys so there's sex discrimination. Note that we don't demand of women that they donate their kidneys or their blood. At least opens the possibility that what's going on is that states, officials, people are seeing a difference between the failure to provide an organ on the one hand and the kind of intentional killing of the fetus that's required to remove the fetus in an abortion, on the other hand. That's a kind of distinction that shows up in our law, that's discussed in Vacco v. Quill and in Glucksberg itself, the assisted suicide cases. You can dispute it or not, but that's obviously a distinct difference that might explain in a non-invidious way why we let men and women refuse to donate their blood, but not intentionally kill to remove a fetus. On the point of whether we do that at the risk of the woman's life, and this is what I'll end with, I do think there is a strong constitutional argument rooted in the kind of history argument that Dobbs itself lays out for the idea that there's a constitutional right to lifesaving procedures, precisely because all of the regulations, all of the jurisdictions that I mentioned do expressly make an exception for cases where a procedure is needed to save the mother's life. So I think there is a deeply rooted history of protecting that.
So I would just say, on the equal protection argument, if anybody thinks that abortion would be outlawed if men were the ones who bore the burden, you know, you're living in some world that I don't recognize. The reason that this has been outlawed and regulated is because it's women who are affected, and it's men who have enacted the rules. So it is without question, I think, there's a fundamental equal protection problem here. With respect to Sharif's, you know, invoking, you know, John Hart Ely and Henry Friendly, great thinkers, great scholars, yeah, you can certainly criticize Roe within the frame of doctrinal elaboration, the kind of constitutional interpretation that every justice uses, even the originalists most of the time. But that's not what Justice Alito said. That is not what the decisions, the decisions didn't say, well, we buy, you know, we buy that due process protects all these things that were not protected at the time it was adopted. You know, the right to marry someone of the same sex, the right to have sex with someone of the same sex, the right to refuse medical treatment, the right to raise your kids. None of those things were protected at the time that the due process clause was. And the court didn't say, well, all of those things, yeah, even though they're not in the Constitution, even though Carrie would say that's legislating from the bench, those are all right, and it's just that they went too far in this case. That's not what they said. People made that argument in Casey, and the court rejected it. People made that argument in Casey, and the court rejected it and said, "No, we believe that this is a critically important, personal, intimate decision, just like those other decisions. Yes, it has costs. Absolutely, it has costs. But we weigh those costs, and we weigh those costs with the undue burden standard. It's not like it's an absolute right. It is a right that balances the interest of the woman and the interest of the fetus." So what the court said is, and its entire justification is, that these 50 years of decisions were wrong because the court did not, those courts did not use originalist interpretation. An originalist interpretation, as I said before, is something that, if that's true, if any decision is wrong that did not use originalist interpretation and can't be squared with originalist interpretation, then, you know, really, all bets are off. And we are down the road to segregation as legal, women aren't protected by the equal protection clause and the like. And that's why it's clearly not egregiously wrong, because even the originalists will not apply originalism when they don't like the results. They'll invoke it when they do like the results, and they'll look the other way when they don't like the results. The best example of that is the question of whether this case means that all those other due process rights are now out the window, because that was one of the arguments. Because if you're originalist, then they are. And Alito and Kavanaugh go out of their way to say, "Oh, no, 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 no. We don't mean to call into question the right of same-sex marriage, the right of same-sex intimacy, the right of contraception, the right of interracial marriage. We don't mean to call any of those things into question." Why? You know, no good reason given, except, you know, they're not willing to overturn those. Not because originalism would lead to affirming those decisions, but they're just not willing to overturn them. Justice Thomas then disagrees, and he says, "Actually, I think we should reconsider the right to contraception. I think we should reconsider same-sex marriage. I think we should reconsider Lawrence versus Texas, the right of consenting adults to choose with whom they have sex without the state interfering." But he stopped there. He wasn't willing to say, "I think we should reconsider interracial marriage." Now, why is that? Not because originalism would lead to any different result, but because Justice Thomas is not willing to go there, and for good reason, he's not willing to go there. But for the same reason, originalism is not a legitimate justification for declaring prior decisions egregiously wrong when four justices out of 116 have ever employed it in any consistent way.
All right. So to quickly address some of David's points first, and then Mary Ann's, the notion that if you actually interpreted law and originalist thing, that we would go back to segregation and, you know, the anti-mis legislation laws, all of these things, I think is just flat-out not true. I think that you look at the originalist members of the court, I just don't, they are absolutely originalist offenses for everything from Brown versus Board on down, and, you know, sometimes they do involve the privileges and immunities clause in some cases. I mean, Justice Thomas, simply because he says something's not, something I would reach via substantive due process. Look at the McDonald versus City of Chicago case. He obviously thought there was a very strong Second Amendment right to bear arms as to the federal government, but illustrated that you can be really consistent and say, "Hey, I'm not willing to introduce something that I don't think is a proper method of interpretation" to then apply it to the states. However, the privileges and immunities clause has been effectively eliminated from our consideration, and it's a part of the Constitution. And just as one shouldn't, in keeping with the rule of law, add things to the Constitution that aren't there, if we really want to do justice to the document, we ought to take seriously the provisions that actually are in the document. To Mary Ann's point that, you know, perhaps originalism is bad for women because at the time of the founding, women did not have the level of rights that they have today, I don't think that's an argument that originalism is bad for women. That's an argument that maybe early American law wasn't sufficiently protective of women. But that the idea of originalism is not a substantive one, and it's not originalism because we think that everyone had everything right in 1789. Originalism, and I have a degree in linguistics before I went to law school, it just strikes me as how one interprets language. If we're having a conversation, we have to use those words, we interpret those words as they're understood by people using the language that we're using. We can't have some secret code where I say yes and it means no in my head, any more than -- and while there are times historically that words clearly do shift and change their meaning, if you're going back and interpreting a historical document, you have to ask, "Well, what did that document actually mean at the time?" You can have words that have changed their meaning. I'm not going to interpret them according to what they mean in the 2022 dictionary. I'm going to look at what they actually, what they meant, because this is language and communication between these people at the time. If we accept that the Constitution is, that there's legitimacy to the fact that our government was, Constitution was ratified by the American people and then has been carried on since then, we have to ask, "What did they ratify?" It is linguistically bizarre to say that they ratified whatever these words mean in a 2022 dictionary, or whatever these words we feel like they ought to mean today. If we're looking, if we really are taking seriously that those are limits placed on government, then we have to take seriously what they meant at the time. Now, we might not agree with all of those rules. It's not only, you know, not only were those original rules for bad for women, they were obviously very bad for all black Americans. I mean, slavery is in the Constitution, right? But that doesn't mean that originalism and that we don't read documents differently because we need to get to the results we want. That's a results-oriented way of reading it. The solution for that, and it was a horrible and hard-fought solution, was a combination of the Civil War and the Reconstruction Amendments. That's how we fixed that. It would be obviously much better if we had fixed it by amending the Constitution in the first place, but to say we're going to reinterpret this document using illegitimate linguistic methods is not really, or illegitimate logic, isn't fair to say, "I'm going to use that to get to a better substantive result." And then just finally, I really actually like Mary Ann's point about the heckler's veto on stare decisis. I think we would have to be careful not to allow the acceptance to become that. I think that's actually a factor that has come in to a lot of the discussions about the court's legitimacy nowadays. You know, David mentioned the low approval ratings. I think it's very hard to separate those out from the fact that we have had a constant drumbeat of criticism, particularly in the media, against the court, and people suggesting that the court would be illegitimate, up to Supreme Court justices themselves, which I think is really unfortunate to see some of the comments, for example, by Justice Kagan suggesting that her colleagues were acting illegitimately. I think it's one thing to criticize someone's reasoning in a case, but I think it's another thing to impute some of the motives that were done by her speaking. And I think that is that sort of heckler's veto. It becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy if everyone just all day, every day says, "Wow, how could the court do this? We can't trust them." Then it's no wonder that their opinion polls go down. I think that's one of the many reasons that looking at opinion polls is not the way that judges, of course, should come to their conclusions and decisions. I think that's why people protesting, hoping that that, on the justices' lawns, which still continues to this day, isn't the way that you should make your arguments. I think we should make them using reason and analysis. So, thank you.
So let me take Carrie's points in reverse order, because I think they're a fundamental misunderstanding in the first place of what I said, and in the second place of the difference between originalism and textualism as currently applied. On this, I said that I'm going to take Carrie's points in reverse order, and I think they indicate a fundamental misunderstanding, first place about what I said concerning the heckler's veto, and in the second place, the difference between originalism and textualism as they are currently applied. So on the heckler's veto, I am not talking about disrespect for the court by opponents of what the court is doing. I am talking about incentivizing disrespect for the rule of law by people who think the court will, if they hear enough noise, if they hear enough unrest, if people do not accept their decisions, will get those decisions reversed. If a factor in stare decisis that is given potentially determinative weight is how much dissatisfaction with the opinion, not with the court, with the opinion, with the result is, that incentivizes dissatisfaction. It's the difference between Gore in 2000, accepting the determination of the Supreme Court that he lost the election, and the tendency now of people not to give up their election denialism. Because if they take Dobbs seriously, if they take the heckler's veto notion seriously, the more they protest, the more likely they are to succeed. And that just dissolves the rule of law into a system in which disrespecting it, and I don't mean thinking the court is acting illegitimately, I mean actively taking steps against settled law in hopes of unsettling it, that's dangerous. So, and the first point, I think Carrie is completing textualism and originalism as currently practiced. I have, because of the fortuity of the language in the Constitution, I have very few problems being a constitutional textualist. I will note that the recent, most infamous, allegedly originalist decisions on guns and on abortion do not focus on the text. Famously, Dobbs focuses on the absence of the text, and we hear a whole lot about practices from the 13th to the mid, to the early 20th century, that is to say, in precisely that period in which women were, at some points, not even considered human. I'm wearing my little human bracelet here, just so you know exactly what you're dealing with, right? I'm labeling myself, "I'm not ordinarily an identitarian, but homo somit nihil humana me alloonum puto." I am human, and nothing human is alien to me. I have only been recognized as fully human relatively recently, before the period in which, to which the originalists look. And, you know, I set out in detail how this happens in the framing of the original Constitution in this piece I talked about. Similarly, the framers of the 14th Amendment did consider what it would mean, 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendment, what it would consider for women's rights. I'll just give you one random sample, there are many, many, many quotes. Lee VanderVeld also writes about this. So someone is asking, he's talking about against abolition of slavery. Parent has a right to the services of the child, husband has a right of property in the service of his wife. All these rights rest upon the same basis as a man's right of property in the service of slaves. This relation is clearly and distinctly defined by the laws and clearly and distinctly recognized by the Constitution. And then somebody else says, Senator Edward Cowan, "This amendment was made simply to liberate the negro slave from his master. That is all there is of it. Will anybody undertake to say that this was to prevent the involuntary servitude of my child to me, of my apprentice to me, or the quasi-servitude to which the wife, to some extent, owes to her husband? Certainly not." That's originalism.
Before I open it up for questions, I just would be curious if any of the panelists would like to express any thoughts on the Chief Justice's concurrence proposing a middle way. I note that he is not, his concurrence has not been the topic of discussion here today.
Go ahead. So, a lot of people on both sides had thought this is an all-or-nothing affair. Roe and Casey say you can't have a ban before viability at 22, 23 weeks. This is a ban at 15 weeks, so you have to pick, Roe and Casey, or this law. The chief said, "No, we don't have to pick because we can overturn just part of Roe." Because actually Roe had two parts. One was, there's a right to an abortion, and the second was, you can trump it at viability. We get rid of the second, the first is standing, and we don't have to decide whether to stick with it, because this law leaves a reasonable opportunity to abort. I think reasonable opportunity is a very different conception from just the general idea that there's a right to abort. It comes with a different set of justifications, and it's found nowhere in Roe or Casey or any of the precedents they rely on. If you wanted to break it into two parts, Roe really said, "There's strict scrutiny on any regulation of abortion at any stage, and that scrutiny is satisfied only from viability." If you get rid of the viability line, what you're left with is, there's strict scrutiny on any abortion regulation at any stage, which is an incomplete legal thought. You need to fill it in with a substantive view about fetal worth in order to get the conclusion that he wanted.
So, you know, I think Justice Roberts' decision shows that there was no necessity in this case to overturn Roe versus Wade, that the case could be resolved and the law could be affirmed without overturning Roe versus Wade. The five justices who decided to do President Trump's bidding, you know, went beyond what was necessary to decide the case. And Chief Justice Roberts has long been an advocate of minimalism, that if we don't need to decide something in order to resolve the case, we ought not decide it, we should not decide it, and that that's actually an important part of the rule of law, an important part of the legitimacy of the court. You know, I think what's clear is that the five, at least with respect to abortion, don't particularly seem that concerned about the institutional legitimacy of the court. They seem more concerned about getting their way while they have the votes, which is a perfectly legitimate view if you're a member of Congress or you're a member of city council, not if you're a justice. I think you do have to think about the institution, you do have to think about legitimacy, and it is perfectly appropriate to call into question the legitimacy of the court when it's acting illegitimately. And this was one instance. Carrie says, "Oh, you know, Justice Kagan, she used the word illegitimate." You know, Justice Thomas has been calling the court illegitimate for, you know, for years, because it does not apply originalist, his originalist interpretation. Chief Justice Roberts called the court illegitimate when it decided the same-sex marriage case. Chief Justice Scalia called the court illegitimate virtually every time he disagreed with the decision that the majority came to him. He did it very colorfully. And I bet if we go back, we can find Carrie calling the court illegitimate for some of these decisions. So there's nothing wrong with using that term. The critical thing is, is the court legitimate or not? And when it has a 25% approval rating, that is a serious concern, because institutional legitimacy is critical to our survival as a pluralist nation with diverse views. And when, you know, even the court has approval ratings that low, we're in trouble. And it's only in the wake of Dobbs that we've seen that.
So to Chief Justice Roberts' opinion, I think it only shows that you can, that you could dissolve this case without overturning Roe and Casey if his own opinion would not have overturned Roe and Casey. But as I think it was Solicitor General Prilagar pointed out in an argument, and both, all of the litigants that argued at the court acknowledged, there simply isn't a way to uphold the Mississippi law without overturning Roe versus Casey. I think your options are to overturn it, or to maintain it, or to rewrite it to such a degree that I think it's fair to say it was overturned. I think Chief Justice Roberts' opinion offered a different standard than Roe or Casey, and as the Solicitor General said, that would amount to effectively overturning them. So it's simply not the middle ground that I think it purported to be. I do think there's a difference between, I mean, there's a difference between justices calling out the particular opinions and cases that they disagree with, and suggesting something about the motives of their colleagues, which is what I read into Justice Kagan's remarks. I mean, Justice Scalia, who was happy to, as you point out, colorfully disagree with, for example, Justice Breyer, they went around the country having debates on this topic. I think nonetheless considered him a longtime friend and wasn't saying he was personally, intentionally subverting law, and I think that's what Justice Kagan walked up to doing. So that is something that I think is concerning.
So first, I want to associate myself with David's most recent remarks. And then, secondly, I want to say that what Chief Justice Roberts was doing, I think, is in some sense in the spirit of the German Constitutional Court. That is to say, do something that's workable even if it's not perfectly intellectually coherent. And I want to make a broader point about this that I make to my classes all the time, which is, very often in law, the right place to be as a practical, as a sociological matter is somewhere in the middle of a slippery slope where it's very difficult to gain a foothold. And it's one of the dangerous lessons, I think, most first-year law students learn, is that the moment you slide down the slippery slope, you're safe. So in contracts class, the kid says, who says, "Sure, I can sell myself into slavery," is insulating him or herself from criticism, and finding that toehold in the middle of a slippery slope is much more of a challenge. And I realize it's a challenge some people do not meet in their efforts, but I have learned from my experiences in Germany to commend those who try.
Thank you all. And what, we've got, looks like, two microphones set up, one in the front, one in the back, so I'm going to alternate. Let's start with the gentleman in the front.
Thank you. David Burnett, from, practicing out of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. Before I went into law, I was a critical care nurse for six years. Before I went into law, I was a critical care nurse for six years and married to a beautiful OB-GYN who couldn't be with us today because she's delivering babies. So, this issue, that's a predicate for my interest on this issue, and feeding off of the healthcare question, I have a three-part question, and if you, if that's not allowed, then just pick your favorite. But picking off of the healthcare question, most healthcare, whether it's the practice of medicine or the regulation, is regulated at the state level. And if Dobbs was incorrect, and abortion is permitted to be regulated at the federal level, would that open the door to additional regulations? Question one. Question two, we heard a discussion of the common law duty to rescue or lack thereof. What I haven't heard is a discussion of the exceptions, which I was taught in law school, which would be, if you exist in a special relationship to someone, you do have that duty to rescue, or if you have already assumed the duty, you have that duty to rescue, or if you have created the peril, all three of which do apply in the case of a pregnancy. And then the final question being, if we believe, if we accept the premise that Dobbs was wrong under the premise of stereocytosis, wouldn't overturning it, either now or in another 49 years, commit the very same error that people here say Dobbs committed? Thank you.
All right, there are a lot of questions there. Does anybody want to pick one, two, three, and then give an answer?
I was, so, on the, on the point about healthcare, I think you're right, there is a general duty, there's a, there's a reason, but it has not been interpreted to require of parents either of these kind of donation actions. On, you know, and the related question of whether that reflects some kind of bias against women, I think one of the most embarrassing facts for the sex discrimination argument, or the argument that in a world where men got pregnant, abortion would be allowed, is that the gender gap on abortion, sorry, the gender gap in public opinion on abortion is smaller than it is on almost any other issue. You would expect at least some asymmetry between men and women. There's a Vox explainer, I don't usually recommend those, but there's a Vox explainer that points this out. And that's just a kind of practical empirical point that suggests the distinctions you're pointing to, and on the one hand, and the norm against intentional killing of the fetus on the other, reflected in abortion laws, reflects something other than invidious discrimination.
If I can just jump in, one other comment on the parity between men and women is, I think the closer example of, is that men are not in fact allowed to cause the end of a pregnancy of their own child. Like, if a man attacks a woman he's impregnated to kill their baby, we prosecute that, and we should. And that is the close, intentional, intentionally causing the end of a pregnancy and intentionally taking that fetal life is prosecuted against men, and so, I think that is the closer parallel.
And in terms of duties of care, we do require them to provide child support, even if they didn't consent to doing that, and even if the sex was contracepted. So, they say that, well, they didn't assume the risk of that. And that's the closest that's biologically possible to demanding of the man some kind of positive support as well, and involves his own labor.
We just, we can't pretend that the biological realities don't exist, that women are the ones who are having the pregnancy. So, you simply couldn't have the same exact parallel, but the closest example is just not causing the death of the child.
There's certainly a biological difference, but, you know, when one starts to analogize a woman making a decision about her own body, and whether she's going to go through the dangerous and sometimes deadly process of bearing a child to term, and analogizes that to a man beating and killing his spouse's or some woman's unborn fetus, we really are in different worlds. We really are.
See, he gives her poison, it doesn't affect her body, but it affects the child.
And the, and the same thing to Sharif. I mean, the notion that, I mean, do you really believe that if we had legislatures that were, you know, 80% women, that we would have laws against abortion? You really believe that?
Is it, is it no, is it, I absolutely do. And this is a reflection of the polarization, and that's exactly right. We live in different worlds, which means that most pro-choicers do not know what actually motivates most pro-lifers. And at a practical level, why isn't it the case? Why is it the case that men and women oppose abortion at almost exactly the same rates if it's so, so much worse, if it's such a reflection of discrimination against women?
Yeah, and why is it the case that on every abortion referendum that's gone to the public since Dobbs has been decided abortion has been, has been, the regulation of abortion has been the loser, and the right has been?
But how is that an answer to my question?
And, and why is it that, it's an answer to your question.
It's not an, no, my question was specifically about sex discrimination. Your point is an important point about the current state of play, which is that there's a lot of opposition to the pro-life view that's reflected in these referendums. My question is, if abortion opposition is rooted in sex discrimination, why is there no gap in the rate at which men and women are pro-life?
I think if you look at those, those votes, you will see there, there is a gap. And I think at, while, as long as, as long as the Supreme Court's decisions had guaranteed a right to abortion, it was quite easy for people to say, "I'm against abortion," knowing that their child, or they, could in fact get an abortion if they, if they needed an abortion. Now, when that's no longer the case, and women's rights really are on the line, what you're seeing is women mobilizing, women voting, and women saying, "Yes, this is a right that we..."
That assumes that women were faking it, or at least faking it higher rates than men until now.
It's just way less costly to take that.
And we're going to let this side of the room answer these questions.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Just, just one comment to the analogy. I think if you, if a man, truth of the matter is that abortion pills are not, are not without side effects to the woman, but say there, say there was one, and you could just give them the pill that the only, the only effect would be that it kills the unborn life inside of her, and a woman could take that pill and it wasn't prosecuted, and a man could give her that pill, even, you know, secretly give her that pill somehow, so that, but it only affected the baby, that would, that would still be, that actually is more of a discrimination, I would say, on the basis of sex, where the mother has the right to kill the child, but the father does not. So, anyway, I just maintain, just to clarify, that it doesn't have to be a matter of him physically attacking the woman, although practically speaking, I think that's unfortunately how such things often do play out in the real world. But, and it should be that neither, I'm with Mary Ann, let's raise the standards for everyone, let's make sure that both parties are required to support child support and to maintain the children, but we have to recognize biological realities. And just, you know, standing here as someone who can illustrate that not all women think that, asking women to kill their children or permitting them is actually good for the woman herself, let alone the child, and of course, we know that, that women are disproportionately the victims of abortion on the unborn side as well. So, this is, there are a lot of different angles to how this plays in as a women's issue.
So, if Carrie is going to engage in, you know, medical speculation about, for example, this magical pill that might do something, I'm going to do a similar thing, saying, what would the people who are demanding that women carry their children to term feel differently if an abortion simply removed the fetus from the body of the woman, which if it occurred before viability would lead to the death of the fetus? If you are not imposing a burden on women to rescue, to do more, then you should be perfectly fine with that. Remove the fetus carefully, it's going to die. But if it is not, if it is not peculiarly entitled to a kind of sustenance from the pregnant mother that it is not entitled to, you know, again, deliver it to one of Amy Coney Barrett's, you know, stations where you can dump your child, right? She said, "This is the solution." Well, you know, take the 12-week embryo and deliver it to such a station. I don't think that most anti-abortion people would say, "Fine, that solves the problem." I do want to go to the, I'm not qualified to address in detail, but I don't want to leave entirely unaddressed the very important question of federal versus state regulation, and how this relates to regulation of other health. In the same way as the maxim that family law is the province of the states, even though both Constitution and lots of federal regulation do address family law and have for a long period of time, similar kinds of things can be said about the regulation of health. Both the Hyde Amendment and the Affordable Care Act have set various rules about reproductive health, and it is unfortunately true that, you know, whichever party and whichever mindset is in power in Washington has this tendency to want to federalize the medical issues it cares about. I think, I'm thinking about the attempt to, for example, fortunately unsuccessful attempt to step in, and when Oregon had a Death with Dignity Act, the federal government tried to say that physicians who cooperated with this should be penalized under federal law. So, I mean, the dynamic is more complicated, and there are a whole series of different data points that one has to take into consideration when one asks the question, is it constitutionally permissible, is it politically desirable for the federal government to step in on any of these issues of health and reproduction?
All right, Professor Barnett?
Hi, Randy Barnett from Georgetown Law. I'm going to make a point that there's a good chance every single member of the panel will disagree with.
Something about Lochner.
And that is, and that is, that it seems like the majority opinion in Dobbs was clearly a substantive due process opinion. It was not an originalist opinion, and that means that it is not a threat to substantive due process. It is substantive due process. Now, it is conservative substantive due process. It is a conservative theory of substantive due process that's been in the works for a very long time. You've seen it in Glucksberg, you saw it in the City of Chicago versus McDonald, in the plurality opinion, which was purely a substantive, a conservative substantive due process opinion, and, but we, but it was only a plurality, and we even saw it in the Hibbs case, which involves, would you mind, sir?
I'm going to ask the question of the panel as to whether they agree with what I'm about
to say. Thank you. So, the question is whether, and in the Hibbs case, we saw it in Justice Ginsburg's opinion. So, it's a substantive due process opinion with one qualification, and that is, unlike these previous opinions, it does spend a lot of time on what the current state of the law was in 1868. That is, that is a kind of an originalist move, but it is only one kind of originalism and one that's largely rejected. So, I guess that is my question to the panel. Do you actually, now, it may have reached a conservative result, but that doesn't, I mean, I'm sorry, an originalist result, but that doesn't make it an originalist opinion.
Thank you. Does anybody have a response to that?
I don't agree, Randy.
It'd probably be surprising to Justice Thomas to hear he signed on to a substantive due process opinion without knowing it.
Yeah, and I, no, I literally do not understand the argument. If what you're, because they did not, you know, it is only a substantive due process opinion, it would only have been a substantive due process opinion if somebody's substantive due process had been validated. If, for example, they had said fetuses have a right to life, it would be a substantive due process opinion. They didn't. They said this is all up to the legislature.
I think it took for granted the framework in Glucksberg. It dropped a footnote saying, "If you want to be more originalist about it and run this through privileges or immunities, it's kind of the same historical test," and he cites Corfield. So, then he says, you know, "We're just going to proceed." So, I agree, it's granting that for argument's sake.
Thank you. All right, in the front microphone?
Thanks to the panel, good discussion. I've one comment, one question. A comment to Professor Cole. I've, every time I've witnessed a rally protesting abortion, a pro-life rally, it seems like the majority of people there are women, and not just women, but women of childbearing years. So, I'm not sure the point you're making about if men could get pregnant, the law would be different, but that's just anecdotal, but I think it's pretty compelling. The other, my question is about the equal protection. I guess, maybe I'm missing something, but when I think of equal protection with respect to sex, I'm thinking about men can own property, women can't, men can inherit, women can't. So, assuming that equal protection clause applies to sex, men can't, men don't have abortions, and, I mean, since men can't have an abortion, why is, why is it equal protection? I just, I mean, you might be able to justify abortion on other grounds, but why is, why would equal protection be implicated?
So, I'm not going to repeat what I said, let me try and expand on what I said. Again, since Carrie is introducing, you know, hypothetical medical procedures, is my understanding that there is no physiological obstacle to a male body gestating fetus? The only difficulty is that there is no exit for that fetus. So, imagine a situation where the fetus that I, in my last hypothetical medical procedure, had very carefully removed pre-viability from the body of a woman, is then implanted into the belly of a man, yes, it would require cesarean to get that fetus out, but women are forced to endorse cesareans, and I do mean forced in some circumstances. So, I mean, if you are really insisting on that kind of one-for-one symmetry, I suggest to you it is more imaginable than you might have thought.
Men can't get pregnant. I'll just, I'm just.
The microphone in the back.
Thank you, everyone. My question has to do with originalism and women's equal rights. It seemed like there was maybe some assumptions that women didn't have equal rights under the 14th Amendment or today, consistent with originalism, and I was wondering, Bradwell versus Illinois, I think it came out the wrong way in the majority, but Matthew Carpenter, who was one of the architects of the 14th Amendment and leading legal lights on the 14th Amendment, made the argument that Bradwell, a woman, was entitled to equal rights, the right to pursue a common occupation as a lawyer. Chief Justice Samon Chase dissented in that case and said that that was right, that Carpenter, suggesting that Carpenter was right, and then the 19th Amendment gave women the preeminent right of citizenship, the right to vote, and there's an implication that that would involve all of the other rights of citizenship, to the extent there was any ambiguity in the 14th Amendment. So, I'm wondering what the basis is for arguing that under originalism, women don't have equal rights under the 14th, through the 14th and 19th Amendments in their original understanding? Thanks, everyone.
Anyone?
So, again, I commend, sorry to do this, my article, "The Ladies Forget About Them: A Feminist Perspective on the Limits of Originalism," in which I discuss this in great detail. I will, you know, I don't know what more I can say than I already have. I will say that, again, in that piece, I go through lots of original meaning, lots of contemporaneous statements by both the framers, that is to say, the framers of the original Constitution and the Congress in the 19th century, but I, I also go through, I mean, you know, it is now, in the same way as Brown needs to be justified by originalist grounds, and that's something that most members of the Federalist Society accept, people are now trying to justify the Roosevelt Ginsburg Revolution and constitutional sex discrimination on originalist grounds. They're doing a very bad job. I mean, Steve Calabrese has suggested, for example, in a published article, that of course, that what has changed is our knowledge of the facts of the matter. We used to think women were not capable, and now we think women are capable. Ask John Adams if he thought Abigail was capable. He very much did, and that was precisely why he did not want to give her rights. I argue in this piece that the decision to forget about the ladies was as much a decision about the allocation of power within the nation as separation of powers, as federalism. What he says is, women have enough power in the home, and if we gave them equal political rights, if we abolished coverture, then they would have too much power. That's a conscious decision not to recognize women's rights. It's not some sort of lack of awareness of their possibility.
And I would, I would just add, you know, if you apply the Dobbs rationale to the question of whether women are protected by the equal protection clause, you would say, "Well, equal protection doesn't, those terms don't answer that. We have to look at what they were understood to mean at the time that they were adopted, and we look at the practices at the time they were adopted, and if women were not treated equally, and there was no suggestion that the adoption of the equal protection clause was meant to override that, then we can't, as a court, recognize that women have equal protection rights, because that would be us, you know, updating the Constitution or giving it some meaning other than the one that it was understood, its plain meaning at the time that it was adopted." That's the rationale that the court used in Dobbs, applied to equal protection, it would reach, reach the same result. Applied to equal protection, it would reach the same result with respect to whether women are protected or not.
So originalists generally distinguish increasingly between original meaning and originally expected applications. And that's the basis for some originalist scholarship responding to some of these points, explaining that some of these things that were not, as a practical matter, respected, are required by the meaning that was enshrined in the clause. It's interesting that the court, in its precedent, uses the longstanding practices or deeply rooted in history test to tell you what unenumerated rights exist under due process or privileges or immunities. They haven't adopted that in the equal protection context. In the due process or privileges and immunities context, the reason they're doing it is, as clear on the face of the cases, A, there's a substantive view about what privileges or immunities means. It means the things that were historically protected. But B, there's this concern not to allow judges who are unelected to update the extremely broad terms without any tether, not just in text, but even in history. And I think, you know, speaking to the question of whether originalists would follow their conclusions to their logical premises, I think there's a similar kind of challenge to nonoriginalist theories of the equal protection clause, right? So if the general idea is that, look, the people who ratified the 14th Amendment were bad, they had a cramped understanding of who counts as a person deserving of equal protection, and so we should update our understanding of, our application of it, we should let judges update what the amendment means in light of contemporary mores about equality, especially if contemporary mores include more people in the circle of protection. By that logic, if society updates its mores to the point where either society in general or the judges think that the unborn are constitutional persons, entitled to equal protection, that's a new view, it's a view that's more expansive of the people who are protected, it's, the proponents of it would say, "Look, the 14th Amendment people had a cramped understanding of who counted as a person." This approach would require the court to strike down any law permitting abortion, or any clause permitting abortion, to require the states to ban abortion as a matter of constitutional law. And I don't think most nonoriginalists would go there.
No, nor do I think, what does nonoriginalism lead you there, nor do I think nonoriginalism is untethered, as you said. It is tethered to the precedents that have been decided before, to the requirement to give reasons to, in the same way that every decision by a judge is tethered by precedent, the interpretation of liberty is tethered, the interpretation of equal protection is tethered, the interpretation of, you know, unstated constraints on the executive power and the legislative power are tethered. So they're all tethered, and I think you could make that argument, I just don't think it would be a good argument, but you can.
I agree that nonoriginalisms are often tethered in some ways. There's an incrementalism to common law constitutionalism, for example. But I was saying, if the idea is, we have to update, because the 14th--
No, that's not the idea, though. The idea is not, we have to update.
Which, which part?
The idea is, the idea is, we have to take the question presented before us. The question presented before us is whether abortion should be constitutionally protected. How do we answer that question? We start with the text, we start with the principle that liberty respects, we look at how the court, over the last, you know, whatever, 150 years, has interpreted that, what it has extended to, we try to generalize from that, and then we draw our conclusion. And you're making an argument that one could make that argument. You could make that argument. And at the end of the day, you can make lots of arguments. All I'm suggesting is, you're not untethered. The criticism often is, if you're not an originalist, you're untethered. No, you're not untethered, because there's the tethers that always apply. And two, you're not tethered, if you're an originalist, if you can do originalism when you want to reach one result, and not do originalism when you want to do another result. And that's what every originalist has done in history. No justice, even Justice Thomas, has been willing to go to the mat on originalism. And, you know, the people who are now fighting to try to figure out, how can we justify Brown versus Board, and how can we justify women's rights under originalism, they're just not willing to go to the mat. And so they're, you know, using the discretion that the doctrine allows to try to come up with different arguments. So all of these theories give you that discretion, and all of them are tethered in some respect.
I'm going to give this side of the room a chance to comment as well.
One, a couple of quick things. One is, I'm sure it's true, given the fact that all of our justices in American history have been human beings, and therefore prone to error, and prone to not being able to stand up to their own standards, that you probably could find every single purported originalist that at times hasn't been able to fully separate his or her policy goals. But at least in attempting, in employing originalism, they are at least attempting to do so. The big problem with many of the other constitutional interpretation methods is, they don't even provide a means for attempting to do so, and I think that's a real challenge. Just finally, I'll note that, as you said, the question here is, should abortion be covered by the Constitution? And I would submit, that's not the question. The question is, is abortion, are abortion rights actually covered by the Constitution? And if the judges are asking that question, it's much simpler.
And I'm giving Carrie the final word on that, and I will turn to the next question.
Thank you. Greg Dolan from University of Baltimore. I want to bring the conversation a bit back to kind of the original topic, the rule of law part. And for that, I have two questions on perhaps, you know, issues that were mentioned but not deeply delved into questions. First, I guess Professor Case, I was a little struck by, and maybe I misunderstood, and so Fadil, I apologize, so maybe you can expand on your initial answer. First, you said that it's a problem if the court goes back and revisits a case that was severely criticized, kind of when people are unhappy and agitating, and if the court kind of goes back on itself, that's what creates a problem for rule of law. And I don't want to wave the bloody shirt of Brown, but I'm going to ask, for example, in a more anodyne area--
Okay, we are running out of time, so--
Like antitrust, the court gets new data, people are agitating, they go back, they change the law. Is it really kind of the agitating and the criticism, is it really a problem? And I'm going to skip my second question, since we're out of time.
Okay, so I'll leave antitrust to the side, because as I understood the premise of your question, with respect to antitrust, what changed was a knowledge of the facts, not a restlessness about accepting the prior decisions. I'll take Brown. I mean, what I see Brown doing, and what I see the strategy of the NAACP, and the holdings in the cases from Plessy to Brown, being, it's not about unrest on the part of the black population, it's about the workability of separate but equal. It's a court realizing that it tries and tries and tries to apply the doctrine of separate but equal, and realizes that even if it asymptotically, and it doesn't even do that, approaches equality to have separateness, it will never approach equality. It is a legal realization that separate but equal does not work legally. It is not about riots in the streets. It is not about passing legislation that is inconsistent with the holding. And partly, I mean, there's a lack of analogy here, right? Because Plessy is a doctrine of permission, not of prohibition, right? So segregation could have been disestablished by simply legislators voting for integration. And that differs from the kinds of things that are subject to this heckler's veto, I think.
And I'm actually going to turn to one last question. I believe that's Roger Severino in the back.
Yes, indeed. I am not going to plant a question, so I'm going to ask Professor Case. You use the hypothetical, what if a child could be taken from the womb without impacting the health of the woman, pre-viability. So let's continue that hypothetical, post-viability. And God willing, we'll get to a point where a delivery is always safer than abortion, presume we get there. Is there any right for that child's life to be ended at the whim or will or reasoning of the mother, when her health would not be at issue if that delivery could be completed?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I mean, you're saying that a woman has no right to control over her body or her time?
No, I'm saying if it could be removed out of the body without any health implications, could the mother decide that the child should be killed before that delivery? Is abortion, in your estimation, I guess Professor Cole, too, the right to a dead child, the right to no progeny, or simply right to not be pregnant?
I mean--
Say she could transplant it to another woman, surrogate mother.
Yeah, no, I mean, I am, I mean, my own views on this have not been really what comes into question. I'm happy to, in more than the three minutes available to me, discuss them with you. I am trying to deal with the opposition and its claims, and to understand those claims and their limits. And that's why I engaged in this hypothetical, because I'm trying to see what exactly it is that the opponents of abortion are claiming, and what kinds of imposition they demand of women.
Thank you. All right, well, I'd like to, this ends our panel, and I'd like to thank the panelists and the audience for joining us today. And a reminder that the next convention event, which is the Barbara Olson Memorial Lecture, will start at 5:00. Thank you. [applause][1788.61]